Good call. Does this rate mean order? Call roll.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
McCransky.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
Please stand and join us in the pledging of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
So to get started tonight, do we have anybody here that has public comment that has nothing to do with chickens? So, we got three. Okay, so, step up to the mic and take care and step up to the mic and just, we just need for you to say your name.
Mary Ann, you may have to push the button on the very top of the mic where the green light keeps on.
Does that work?
Definitely, well.
My name is Mary Ann Smith. I live at 846 Kings Cove here in Princeton. I'm here tonight to speak against the sale of property from Oakland Cemetery currently under consideration. In the late 1960s, a portion of Greencroft subdivision was purchased by the city to expand Oakland Cemetery, creating lot adjustments and a dead end on the west end of Mayfair Drive. In recent years, homeowners bracketing that dead end have purchased land from the city to enlarge their lots. In the first case, it made sense because a sewer main with manholes made the land unsuitable for burials. In the second, it completed a barrier to illegal crossing of the Oakland Cemetery ground by vehicles launching at speed from Mayfair Drive. These two sales made sense. Last week, the city authorized a survey of the entire length of the west side of Greencroft in preparation for the sale of land to a third homeowner and creating additional one-quarter, approximately, acre plots along the length of the west side of the subdivision. I think this is a mistake that the board needs to address. The cemetery exists for future use. It was purchased for use as a burial ground. In recent years, attempts have been made to build a permanent fence to solidify that use. Since the platting of Greencroft, homeowners have purchased their lots with the understanding that it was a permanent extension of the cemetery, not available for development, and have valued their property as such. The proposed sale of land was done in secret. It has the appearance of trying to slip the sale through before anyone had a chance to study the rationale of the sale or the possible ramification of such a sale. We have questions. We are told that only adjacent property owners can purchase the lots. Is that in writing? Can the parcels be resold in whole or in part? Are there limitations as to what can be built there? Will this sale include parcels along the south boundary of Greencroft? Does the city really want a cemetery border that wiggles back and forth with the lot sales? What is the advantage to the city? What is the long-range plan for the cemetery? In short, the council has opened a Pandora's Box of problems while negotiating a secret sale of property with no clear advantage to the city or the cemetery. I oppose the sale of cemetery property that is currently being considered. Thank you.
My name is Dave Schels, and I live at 921 Bruce Lane, and I'm here because I would like to purchase, up to a quarter of an acre is what I was told we would be able to look at. I would like to consider purchasing some extra area. In my backyard, I have a little small chin, but I'm locked in by a fence line there, and I can't go within five feet of that property line. I need some extra storage space back there. I would like to be able to move my fence out a little bit and add on to my storage building to provide extra storage for myself, plus give us a little bit better quality of life in our case there. I agree with some of the questions that Mary Ann said about selling the parcels. In my case, and I believe all of my neighbors that I have spoken with would agree that we're not going to try to sell a quarter of an acre out there off of our property. That's not even a consideration. So, what I would like to do is, is purchase that. I spoke with some people from the city. I wasn't trying to hide anything. I don't have a couple of lots like some of our neighbors do, or a big area that was already purchased out there away from the city. And I disagree, and I don't know that it made a lot of sense to be able to do that for some people and not for others to be able to do that. I believe that this is something we should consider. I know for myself, if we are talking seriously about extra graves in there, I'd like to think that if those graves come all the way up to my fence, I'd rather that be a little bit farther from the house and less. But I was not aware, I knew that it was going to be used for potential graves, but I was told it was like a pet cemetery or something like that. And all of that happened after I purchased my home. Anyway, one thing I do have a question about is, when all of the other stuff took place with the gentleman that purchased the property, was that brought before the city council? I mean, how was that approved? And yet, this cannot be approved. And he purchased a lot more than just a quarter of an acre out there. There's a significant amount of property. I've got it on my phone if you guys want to see it. He's got a high school area back there. I can understand why he's not really interested in having his view from his house and his pool and stuff like that interrupted. But again, I don't know how that considers to be fair to anybody else that wants to expand upon their land and be able to add additional, in my case, just about another ten-foot long building, quarter acre. I don't know exactly how far it goes out, if that's what we're looking at, but it's not going to be an ice or anything like that to the city or anyone. And I believe that small section would not interfere with any way, shape, or form with the additional area needed for the cemetery.
My name is Tori Clark. I'm also a homeowner on Bruce Lane there in Greencroft, and would also be interested in purchasing the adjacent back of my lot as well.
Forgive me, what's your name?
Tori Clark.
Tori Clark? T-O-R-R-I?
T-O-R-R-I.
T-O-R-R-I. Clark with no E?
Anybody else have any public comment that's not associated with chickens? Okay, so then go ahead and move on. And what we're going to do tonight, we're going to have public comments, so I'm assuming there's people here who like to speak on chickens. If you have spoke on chickens at our last meeting, and you don't have anything new to offer, we'd rather you not speak, so we don't take up a whole lot of time hearing what we've already heard. Those that are here that did not get an opportunity to speak or did not speak, you're more and more happy to, more welcome to come up to the mic, state your name, and you'll have about three minutes to say what you want on chickens. So, once we get to the public comment and we go down through the agenda, if you have an agenda in front of you, you'll notice that number six on the agenda is the ordinance regulating the raising of chickens. It's the ordinance that we passed three weeks ago on first reading. So it's up again tonight for a second reading. If the ordinance passes tonight, if this ordinance passes tonight, then the issue of chickens is resolved, and it will be limited to agricultural zone areas within the city of Princeton. If the ordinance fails, then this ordinance is a dead issue. Then we'll continue on with our regular business, and you'll see now at item number nine on the agenda is another ordinance, also on the raising of chickens in Princeton. And this ordinance has to do with grandfathering in those who have chickens. They'll be grandfathered in. If that ordinance passes tonight, if it's read and it passes, then there'll be a second and final reading in two weeks. If the ordinance fails tonight, then we're basically back to square one and go back and draw on it. So, that's just where we are going forward. So, again, I'm going to open it up now for public comment on the issue of chickens to those who have, haven't had an opportunity to speak or would like to state your case. And all you need to do is come up to the mic, state your name, and so.
My name is Shannon Mae, and I have a packet that I'd like to hand to everyone. We can have these off during?
Yeah.
Okay, once again, my name is Shannon Mae. I live on East Moore Drive here in Princeton. I'm just going to kind of go over the basics of, or the quick version of what I have in this pamphlet, because I know we don't have a lot of time. So, some of the arguments against having chickens included the possibility of disease. I think that's what somebody pointed out at a zoning meeting, which is, I was at the city council meeting, but I was at the zoning. And I just wanted to speak a short, a short bit on that. The first is, the two diseases that are known or related possibly to chickens are salmonella and campylobacter. And I just wanted to speak on the salmonella first. The outbreaks related to live poultry were linked to direct contact with poultry. And only those who were in direct contact would have come into contact with salmonella. So it would not affect the general public, it would only affect the person who owns the chicken. In addition to chickens, other pets that include the possibility for salmonella are turtles, hedgehogs, and lizards, and we don't have anything, so we can't have those in town. The other places you can get salmonella are onions, peaches, mushrooms, and other items that you can eat. Many places have poultry available to feed and touch, including Tanner's Orchard, and some of our local farms that our elementary school students visit. So, if that's a concern, I would argue that that should maybe not be considered a concern. And to speak on the campylobacter, there are no reported outbreaks related to live plants in the United States. And of the things in the U.S. that the CDC says has been linked to that, it includes muddy water and pet store puppies, but no chickens. I also would like to point out that our Department of Public Health person has been in favor of chickens, and if it's a health concern, I would assume that he would direct you negatively if he felt that was a problem. Public nuisance, we have already on the books ordinances that take care of this issue. If someone were to say that, sorry, I get very nervous in front of people, so I'm really sorry. Chickens themselves do not attract rodents. Feet can attract rodents in the same way that dog or cat food can, or squirrel food, or bird feeders, even garbage cans. It's no worse or no different. So that, are the views against that. And as a matter of fact, if you happen to have chickens, some will eat small snakes and rodents, so actually it could be a benefit. And they also eat ticks, mosquitoes, grasshoppers, and other pests. So I just want to throw that in there. As far as noise does, that was an issue somebody mentioned. The noise level for the squawk of a female chicken when she lays her egg, which is once in the morning usually, and not even during the winter sometimes, is only at seventy decibels. And some things that are also around that same noise level are a conversation between two people, so probably less than what I'm talking right now. And then also, at seventy decibels, we have things such as an air conditioner, a washer, and a flushing toilet, and that's as loud as they get. So it could just be that people don't understand that they aren't very loud. A dog and a lawnmower are just there's around ninety to a hundred decibels. Someone else mentioned possibly smell, I think. And I just wanted to say that an average dog produces around a pound of waste per day, whereas a flock of four hens only produces less than half of that, at about 1.5 ounces of waste per hen. So, four chickens can produce less waste than a medium house cat also. Plus, composted chicken manure can be used for composting, so that's not a bad thing. Any violations, like I said earlier, regarding any of these nuisances are already covered in our ordinances, although I believe that the writing at will ordinance specifically says dogs, so possibly you could just change the word to animal. I don't know. I'm not an attorney. Okay, chickens and property values is something else that was mentioned, and I wanted to say that there is not one documented case that a home property value decreases because of a flock that stores. In truth, some realtors and home sellers are offering free coops with every sale, and it emphasizes the value of free neighborhoods. As a matter of fact, Jenelle McCarver, who is with Landmark Realty and one of the top sellers here in Bureau County, has attested to this, and she told me that she sends an email, so you guys know. Really quick with regards to food security, both FEMA and the Red Cross recommend each household keep a supply on hand, food and water in case of an emergency. And I just wanted to let you know, last year, a carton of sixty eggs in May went from four dollars a carton to over thirteen dollars a carton. So that's one more benefit of having chickens at your home. Pretty sure we all know that supply chain issues are still a problem in the U.S., well, in the whole world. Chickens as pets, most people that I've spoken with that own chickens in town feel of them as pets, not as a farm animal. They're part of the family. As a matter of fact, my niece was able to raise a chicken last year during COVID. She suffered mental health issues, and this chicken helped her. During late June of last year, forty percent of U.S. adults reported struggling with mental health or substance abuse, so that is one of the benefits of keeping chickens. Backyard chickens are overwhelmingly allowed in the United States. Nearly all of 150 largest cities in the U.S. are okay with chickens. I grew up in Orlando, Florida, and we were allowed to have chickens. We were also allowed that one. Well, anyway. I think that's kind of the main, sorry, the main points that I wanted to make. And, anybody have a question?
This is strictly public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Holly Harris, I live here in Princeton and own and operate a law firm here in Princeton. And I never thought I'd address this board on a chicken issue. I don't own any chickens, but I do own property, and I do believe that animals are property. And as an American, an Illinoisan, and a Princeton native, I have the right to that property, and I have a desire to maintain that right, free from the interference from this or any other board or body. This idea is a fundamental part of being an American, the American ideal of less law, not more. The U.S. Constitution under the Fifth Amendment, the Illinois Constitution under Section Two, describe the innate and inalienable right to own, possess, and keep property. Our land qualifies as this property. Animals, under Illinois statute, qualify as this property. These rights cannot be infringed upon without specific authority. More specifically, Princeton falls under non-home rule. This means this board can only exercise powers for which they have express authority as provided by state law to do so. You are dependent on obtaining the grants for that authority from the General Assembly or governor. So under that, what authority could this board possibly think to put limits on my innate right to own property? I'm sure we will hear thoughts on the health, safety, and welfare of the public, but I urge you to deeply consider the validity of this path, for this authority acts as a double-edged sword. Not only does this board lack any substantial facts, research, or data to suggest chickens are a danger to the Princeton people's health, safety, or welfare, that actually, as we've heard here tonight, and you each have a book like in front of you, we've got information quite to the contrary, and our public health and safety council member here has clearly not made any objection as it being a process that will affect the public health, safety, and welfare. There are very precise and eloquent arguments that have been made before this board, and not just tonight, but the previous zoning and board meetings on the chicken issue, that actually argue there is no health or safety risk to Princeton, and I would argue that that double-edged sword suggests there's actually, the public health, safety, and welfare protects our argument as landowners, that it's actually for our public health, safety, and welfare, that we should be allowed to own chickens. It actually protects us, not the board's right to interfere with our property rights. Chickens are essential to, are an essential benefit to many of the townspeople's health, safety, and welfare, in that they provide economic relief, pet-like social relief, aids to mental stability, a substantive food benefit in times of need, be it in the past, now, or in the future. This double-edged sword works only to destroy any attempt by this board to regulate my God-given and that of the other townspeople innate and inalienable rights to my property and to theirs. I would urge this board to diligently consider protecting the American rights and values of the constituents who voted you onto this board. I suggest that the laws long in place, as discussed by Ms. May in front of this board, adequately protect any issues that would arrive, arise out of chicken ownership in Princeton. I would further urge this board to consider that just because there are a few phone calls of complaints over chicken issues, that they deeply, deeply consider what that may lead into. Next week, is it going to be that somebody doesn't like the sound of my dog's bark, or the color of my dog's hair, or the bite that my child rides outside? When you go down this slippery slope and you start limiting people's property rights without facts to back it up that support the safety, welfare, and health of the people, you're entering into a very, very dangerous area. Thank you.
My name's Kevin Freeman. I live here in town, like pretty much everybody else here. You'd be well served to remember this is a farming community, and pretty much everybody in this room is from that. I'm going to kind of make this interaction a little bit here. How many of you in here are in your thirties? Or in your forties? Fifties? I see everybody out there looking old. You're not going to carry this town through the future. It's been this way a long time. I grew up in this town. I had a house where we had a horse that lived in it because it was grandfather day. Came right up into our house. So it isn't a big deal. Because one person's got a problem with their neighbor, it rains.
This is my daughter, Aleah. She gets a little nervous when I drive. Okay.
What are your names?
Your names, what?
Aleah Shirts, and Tina Shirts. And we live at 620 Park Avenue West. We bought the house about a year ago. We have three children, Malachi and Savannah, and I'm here, and they do have some chickens. And we have more than an acre, almost an acre and a half. The one dream she had is to have chickens, maintain her own business. She's thirteen. You complain that children have no value in buildings, that they don't respect, they don't have compassion, but anytime that you, like this child has, you want to take that away from my child and other children in this town that have compassion for these animals and take care of these animals, physically, mentally, this is abusive. This is also discrimination, because these are her pets. That's what she wants to do for her business, these are her pets. This is no different than somebody with a cat or a dog. They don't run the streets. A dog makes more noise than a chicken. I can tell you, I can stand in my backyard and hear a good dozen dogs at night. Are you complaining about that? Are you talking about taking those dogs away? No. You're discriminating against an animal. Don't complain that children do not have responsibility, respect, and compassion, because the ones that do, you're taking it away from them. This child is phenomenal with these chickens. I've not seen a child of this age take care of animals the way she is doing and taking the responsibility. She is up at six, eight a.m., willingly to be out there to take care of these animals. Not running the streets, not causing trouble, not fighting a lively. She's also an honor student, highly intelligent, artistic girl, and taking her chickens away is punishing her for selfishness and discrimination, just for the handful of people that are complaining about everybody that has chickens. I've walked around this town, I've driven around this town, and I can say I didn't even know there were other people with chickens, let alone ducks. I don't hear, but I hear dogs. Are you going to take them away? How about the smell that I've walked past houses, and I can smell the dogs? Are you going to take them away? I doubt it. This is a form of discrimination, and I would be very disappointed in a town that I purchased a house a year ago that would sit here and take away from children that are doing something positive in this community, because she is starting her own business. I've already bought her stuff for her, her business. So you're going to take your company away at thirteen? Tell me how many of you know a thirteen-year-old child starting a company on her own, with her own money? So before you go taking away animals away from these children, please consider the mental abuse that you are creating.
please consider the mental abuse that you are creating to these children that will carry them on not just through today, tomorrow, years to come. Thank you.
Please spell your last name.
F-H-U-R-T-S.
Hello, my name is A-G-U-S-H-I, and I'm working at the last town. I'm not here today because I'm fiercely pro-chicken or pro-dog. I'm here because I'm pro-free country.
Go ahead, take your time.
Sure. It's an overall in the conservative community, all in favor, the vast majority of small government and individual freedoms. We're, I've been meeting after meeting where we're debating what is and what isn't a pet. Just every argument for safety sake, or reason why we would need intervening has been expertly refuted by people. It's not like someone's asking to have a lion or something that's generally dangerous. It's just someone's individual freedom. And we're wasting all of this time and resource overstepping our bounds of small government, reaching out and oppressing people's individual freedoms like was explained in their property, merely because of the loudest complainer. We have individuals that don't want others to have them. And like was just mentioned, I'm not a fan of dogs. They're very loud, they can be annoying, but I would never have the audacity to step in here and say, "I expect people to get rid of them because I personally don't like them." So I'm aware that in a free society, in a free country, I would never expect that. And I think that we've lost touch with what the actual issue is because of, again, the loudest complainer, where we need to say sometimes just go, "Yep, you don't like them, it's a free country deal with it," as opposed to wasting taxpayer money and resources to debate what shouldn't be an issue in this community, in this country.
Spell your last name again.
A-G-U-S-H-I.
Thank you.
My name's Garrett Duffin. One trip I was gonna speak today, given so many good points brought up. But I just want to bring up a few things from this new compromise. First off, actually, I want to start off by thanking Councilors McCall, McCransky, and Newman for just finding my long email. And Mayor Querem, we had a few exchanges via Facebook Messenger. Some of those from me, borderline disrespectful, so I'd also like to apologize for that. So, first and foremost, I just want to say, like, the compromise on Facebook, something that really set out to me about posting that compromise on Facebook and something that I really appreciated, was that at the end, Mayor Querem asked for public thoughts on the new compromise. In that same breath, I wondered why it took so long for public opinion to be actively sought out. I understand we all have the opportunity to come speak at city council meetings. We all have the opportunity to reach out via email. That's not an easy thing to do for a lot of people, myself included. Multiple people have talked about how difficult public speaking is for them. I think it should have been more actively sought out, the public opinion on this matter. The second point that I'd like to point out is, this compromise proves that you guys feel regulating chickens is a possibility. That is a feasible thing. So I guess, I question why we're making it specific to current chicken owners. Why we're dumbing it down into, if you have them, you can keep them, and we can regulate it. But if you don't have them, you can't get it because we don't know how to regulate it. If we know how to regulate it, you should just be able to have chickens. Back to the point that I was just made, is my third point, not transitioning very smoothly here. But this goes beyond, for me, this goes beyond chickens. I mean, I love my chickens, I love, but more than that, it's just that space. That I can go in my backyard, if I'm having a frustrating day or stressful day, I can go sit out with my chickens and meditate with them. I created that space with my brother in the middle of COVID. We were having a tough time of not doing anything, locked in the house. Decided, let's go build a fence for some chickens in the backyard. And that's what we did. We got the help of a few neighbors who not only didn't complain, were active members in the creation of our chicken area for our chickens. And have since beat the benefits with eggs. The kids next door come, come around regularly, come play with the chickens, feed them and such. I mean, I'm not saying that we should be able to do whatever we want in our backyard. I'm raising a pet, petting zoo, but got a few chickens in the backyard that I go out and enjoy occasionally. I don't see a big deal. So, that's my piece. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bridgette Gollandi. And we have ducks and chickens. They're my children's pets. My kids are 17, 14, and 10. When we first heard word of mouth that they were going to take the chickens away and the ducks away, my three kids ran to the backyard and sat with them in their lap for hours, petting them, and I guess talking to them, because we go out in the yard and say, "Hey ducks", then they start quacking at you, they know you're there. And it is true, if you raise a little tiny yellow duckling, it will follow around like you're its mother. And they follow my 17-year-old boy around when he's in the yard. They recently went on vacation with their dad, and I stayed home, um, because I had to work. And each morning, the kids would call me, wake me up and call me and say, "Did you get out there? Have you checked on the chickens? You know, how are they doing?" And they know them by name. And I'm like, "Which ones are that?" But they know, and asking me, "How big have they gotten?" Because a couple of them were tiny when they got, when they had left. Well, they shed feathers by now. They, my son is in high school, he can write a research paper on them and each different kind that there is. So he loves them. He would be here tonight and he got called into work, and he goes, "Please go, please say something." So, they, we love them. They're, and they're very clean animals, actually. They want to be bathed. They don't like to be dirty. If you put a pool out, they will jump right in that water and clean themselves and strut around and, and groom their feathers. So they enjoy being clean. Someone else mentioned to me that fines are inappropriate, as there are no such fines for other things, for, um, dogs barking. You know, I don't, I don't think I personally have ever heard of a fine for a dog barking. Maybe you might get told, "Cry at your dog down," but I don't know of any fines that I've heard about. I know my two, three of my neighbors didn't even know I had chickens. One is an elderly lady, and we were just talking yesterday, she signed a petition. She goes, "I think it's lovely that your kids have that to do." Um, another question was, what, if you move to another address, can I not take my chickens to that address if I get grandfathered into the address that I'm at now? But just to remember that they're pets. You have a lap dog, you have a lap duck, or a lap chicken, because the kids really do hold them, and, and they love them.
My name is Jennifer Miller, I live on Park Avenue West. And we are pro-chicken and duck. We have ducks ourselves. I don't see why this is an issue, like a lot of people have been saying. Chickens and ducks are our property, we pay the taxes, shouldn't be able to infringe on our rights. The ordinance that you were referring to, I think you said was number nine on the list, so that it gets voted tonight, you'll vote on it again, is excluding duck fowl together. I'd like to know why. I've asked on, uh, Mayor's Facebook page numerous times, never get a response. Other people have asked, no responses. Someone commented, "How come Jennifer's question isn't being answered?" Why are ducks being excluded? Poultry is not much different than a chicken. Same type of living quarters, similar food, treats, similar noise. Ours are more spoiled than my kid's. They get to come inside during the colder months and take baths and sit in front of the fireplace and warm up. They're a part of the family, not just an animal we have outside that we tend to every once in a while. They're daily animals that we have to take care of. Few issues with the regulations that might go into place if you pass the grandfathering and the chickens. Why only the current chicken owners, like was just addressed? If new people want to move to town, they're not allowed to have animals on their property? That's not right. If I want to buy a house on the north end of town, that's not grandfathered in, I can't have my animals there. I don't agree with that. I know you're putting a limit on how many birds, uh, family can have at their residence. Which, sure, if you're gonna do regulations, you have to have a number. Your number right now is six. What about the families who have more than six chickens right now? They have, like, last meeting, someone said they have 14 or 15 chickens. Are you expecting them to downsize their flock? Another regulation you're wanting is that the herds must be in their enclosure at all times. Why can't I have my ducks in my fenced-in backyard? My property has them. We're out there, they're protected, they're not getting into the neighbor's area. So how can you tell me how I need to have them enclosed? They have an enclosure, but they like to come out when we're cleaning their enclosure. They come out, they hang out in the backyard, they graze, they follow us around, they don't go too far from us. Actually, if you let them out of their coop, they run straight to the fenced-in backyard. Because they know, hey, it's running all the time, we're gonna go up there, we're gonna graze, we're gonna pick bugs, we're gonna eat grass, we're gonna get our treats and our peas. They know right where to go. Without a doubt, they go straight to the backyard. So, I don't agree with them, happy to stay within their coop. Another regulation you talked about was, a city rec would have to come onto my property to check the parameters of the building enclosure for these chickens and ducks. Do you guys go onto the properties of the dog and cat homeowners and check their houses to make sure they have special regulations that set their dogs and cats knees? You also mentioned that if issues were found, someone violated one of your regulations, that issues were found, there would be a fixed amount of time for those violations to be fixed. What's the timeframe? This person gets a couple days, that person gets a week? There's no timeframe on your regulation, so I think that should be addressed. Does anyone know if we have fines in place for dogs running at large? I don't know where the fines of the 200, 500, and 750 for chicken, duck poultry. Don't know where those fines came from, where the numbers pulled from. Do we have fines for other animals in town that are running at large? Are they comparable to these fines, or are the fines just being marked up too high? So people try to avoid just having the chickens all together because they don't want to have to deal with fines? You mentioned that a building permit would be needed, and we would have to pay for that. But you didn't mention what the building permit with fees would be. Also, a few of us got together and got petitions out there over the last couple weeks, and I've got probably a little over 150 signatures that are in favor of chickens and ducks in town. Is anyone here against chickens and ducks tonight? Again, this is at least the third meeting I've been to where no one's come to argue against having these animals in town. Pretty sure that speaks for itself.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak?
I'm Kylie Broader.
B-R-O-A-D-U-S. I'm just here for moral support.
Can you say that one more time?
B-R-O-A-D-U-S. She did this all on her own. I came home from the last one, but she decided to do this.
Okay.
So...
Can you pull my cobbler?
My dad has chickens at his house. And, um, my grandma raises chickens out on her farm. And, um, I like to help her raise them, and I like to help them. And, they're like my friends. They like to, whenever I'm jumping on the trampoline, they go up there with me. Whenever I'm running around, they chase me. And, um, a few months ago, my mom was, my mom's a mail carrier, and she was on her mail route. And when she was driving, she saw something out in a cornfield. And, um, she found a chicken that was there alone because somebody dumped him off in the cornfield. And, um, I feel like if we have to do that, more people might do that to their chickens. And... And, um... I know that my dad and other people might do that, and my friends graze chickens. And they're... They're... They... And they were... They were, they found, when they were doing bird days, they found some, um, just roaming around in the country too. So... So, I'm in favor of chickens?
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Allison Pitts, and I'm also a chicken owner in Princeton. And, uh, I am in favor of chickens and ducks, just because I also do not see much of a difference in the types of poultry. So I just wanted to say that, that I think that anyone who has ducks should also be able to keep their ducks. And, uh, they also can make good flock mates for chickens. So you can like have like a mixed flock of chickens and ducks. Other than that, uh, as a couple people have said already, we already have ordinances pertaining to noise and foul odors and animals running at large. I feel like if we can all comply to those ordinances, I don't feel that we should have any other regulation. Or, I heard mentioned too, perhaps we could go by a case-by-case basis, which, you know, maybe there is someone out there who is causing problems with their chickens, and then perhaps they could be addressed with the person who is complaining or whatever. But, thank you for your time, and good luck.
Anyone else? Only once? One voice?
I'll say really quickly, I, so, I referenced the personal agreement. I want to really just call attention, you know, the children that come up, parents that have brought them up, who love their animals, they don't want to lose their animals. I'm really debating taking loving animals away from children just because some other people don't like it. It's just as simple.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close public, uh, public comment on chickens. There's also an opportunity to stick around for a public comment at the end of our meeting as well. Does anybody have any public comment on anything other than chickens? Cover it all? Okay. So we're gonna move ahead and, uh, we'll go to the approval of minutes in Commissioner's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved that we approved the minutes from our regular council meeting on August 16th, 2021. Second.
Motion's been second. Corrections, hold on.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. We'll go to the approval of invoices and see if Fred Nelson.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances for this period, we have...
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, for this period, we have invoices totaling $121,539.43. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $106,669.82. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $113,553.33. In the Department of Public Property Utilities, we have invoices totaling $243,726.15 for a grand total of $585,488.73. Mayor, all council members have reviewed these invoices, and they are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Hold on.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. We'll go to regular business and see if Kirk Nelson.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-21-020. This is an ordinance regulating the raising of chickens or other fowl within the city corporate limits. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this. This is the second reading and final reading. All council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21-020.
Second.
Motion has been second, comments? Hold on.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
No.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-21-021. This is an ordinance pertaining to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. This is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21-021.
Second.
Motion has been second. I'm gonna let Trish give an update.
As I mentioned at the last meeting, this is just the verbiage that we are agreeing to the terms and conditions of the funds. I will note that we did finally, as what they call a nonessential unit of government, we're not in any EU form of government. It sounds awfully saying "nonessential." We did receive our first installment, because the installments come from federal government to the state, down to the local, whereas if you're a municipality of 50,000, it came directly from the feds. So we did receive our first installment, which was $507,615. We'll get that same amount again next year, so...
Your second, motion has been second. Any additional comments? Hold on.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye. Yes.
Thank you. McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-21-022. This is the second and final reading for an ordinance that is a replat of Hudson West subdivision, Lot 51. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21-022.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Hold on.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez. McCranskey. McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-21-023. This is the second reading, I'm sorry. The first reading. This is the first reading, even though it's the second and I'm wrong here. This is the first reading of an ordinance setting standards for the raising of chickens and other fowl within the city limits of the city of Princeton. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O-21-023 to the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been second. Couple things before we vote on this. The reason why we're all here tonight is because the city of Princeton for decades has not allowed chickens in residential neighborhoods in the city of Princeton. This has gone back decades. So when we started receiving complaints, we are required, required to follow up on it, and look into it, and address the issues. So when I put stuff out on Facebook, that's again, is why we are all here tonight. If I didn't put stuff up on Facebook, this probably would have come before the council would have passed, and nobody would have known anything about it. So I put this information out there, so everybody, you know, it's being as transparent as I can, putting this information out there, what we're looking at, what we're addressing, and what we're offering. And it, you know, generally, it's very well received. I've gotten away from responding to people on Facebook, because I don't want to get into a back-and-forth with individual people. You know, that's what becomes a meeting, and we can have discussions about that, but on Facebook, I don't really want to get into the response. I do once in a while to clarify, somebody's, you know, they may have said something that they weren't clear on, and I'll offer a clarification. And so, you know, we've heard from a lot of people in the last three weeks, all of us up here. We've received emails, we've received phone calls, we've received messages, right up until the meeting today on this issue. We've heard from a lot of people that are pro chicken, we've heard from a lot of people that don't want chickens. So, you know, I want to say, you know, three weeks ago, Ray Nadri was here, and he was up speaking about chickens and his support for chickens. You know, and he developed Park Place subdivision. He doesn't allow chickens in Park Place. And he lives in a duplex, and they don't allow chickens in the duplex. Now, I bring that up because Ray's position is he's okay with chickens as long as they're not in his backyard. And that is generally what I hear from people that don't want chickens. They don't have a problem with chickens, generally. They just don't want to live next door to someone with chickens. Now, they have their reasonings. You know, I'm not, I don't debate with them, their reasonings, they have their reasons. So that's kind of what we've been faced with. We've heard about a lot of people in the last three weeks on this. You know, and it's not just Park Place that doesn't allow chickens in the city of Princeton. These are the Sunset Prairie, Bright Woods, Greencroft. You know, you go up to the condo, Condom Minions on East Thompson Street, they don't allow chickens. They have covenants. You can even go up to Timber Ridge, out in the country, they don't allow chickens because of covenant in their subdivision. So there's a lot of, you know, issues that play into this. But this isn't something, this whole issue is not easy for us. You know, we have to address the issue, we have to look at all sides, we have to take into consideration, you know, what we're dealing with. And there's a lot of people that are not, that don't want chickens. And I agree with everybody in here who's, and there's a couple comments that, you know, you've been here three meetings now, and, you know, there hasn't been anybody here to speak out against chickens. And the emails that I have received from people that don't want chickens, they don't want the voice. They don't want their names out there. They don't want their names out there because they're afraid of the backlash they're gonna get. A lot of that came from through truck ordinance, especially on social media, so... But they're out there. I've heard, we've all heard from them. So three weeks ago, we were about compromise. People wanted to compromise. Because the ordinance that we had three weeks ago that we just voted out tonight only limited chickens day agricultural zone areas. So people came together, they spoke out, and we spoke about compromise. And we voted to pass that ordinance on, knowing that we're gonna have a second ordinance reading tonight, but we wanted to see what else we could do, we came up with a compromise. And the compromise is this ordinance that is under consideration right now. So I'm going to let anybody else upstairs speak.
Okay, I mean, obviously, I've been out on your last meeting, but something to address is, I mean, for public health, that they talked about salmonella, they talked about cantaloupe. And where there hasn't been any outbreaks, there has been cases. Most of the outbreaks that I bring to salmonella are actually from predators. And it has been washed with contaminated water where they are produced. Most of those are not in there. I visited one of the places that has chickens during the night, and they were very content, very clean. They were closed, they had something right over them, where it allowed them to stay where they are. One of the only things that I've also noticed, and the only thing I raised a chicken when I was a little kid that my parents gave me, actually brought in a lot of responsibility in as far as a pet, that the chicken would follow me around and do everything else. And when it was time for that little bird to go, I was devastated. But some of them are considered with, as far as emotional support, it was just like anything else, because they can be trained, and they can be companions for people, especially with depression and anxiety. And not only that, but I'd also heard about children that are taking, and that can actually develop something, something destructive, something they enjoy, and also companionship. And so, not only that, I believe that as far as mental health goes, they can help a lot of people, just like a dog and a cat. I've had more, more reasons with the things that, from Dallas parking customer. I don't complain about it because I deal with it, because people are, she had the right to be able to handle those. And one of the things about this ordinance is that if you grandfather something in, basically what it does, it actually kills anybody else who has any chickens, because it actually kills, kills their nutrition. By little, when people stop having one over their own mouth, you basically give that away. And I believe that there's something in there that, basically, you're right for someone to have something like that as long as it doesn't get out of control, they keep it clean, and they take care of it. I was gonna say something else. Also, there's, there's, there's something that is to be said for cities and towns that they want to move forward. One of the things that I believe is that things change. From the time, you know, we were just being a co-host a while ago, things have changed. And you have to be able to adapt, not only as a city, but as a community, to be able to hold it. We have younger generations that like to do other things besides just their own. I know the dog breed was a big issue a long time ago, and they weren't allowed to have it. We have people that are young, they are young executives, they're, they like to do certain things. They like to have chickens, like to have dog, they like to do things. And if you stop that from happening, you're basically stopping the progression every time. And people will look somewhere else. Thank you.
I think it changes a lot of minds three or four weeks ago, and many people tried to us. I think that we need to have one on the line, from phone calls and emails that we receive. And that's where I think, that's what makes this compromise, I think, something that is fair, and it's equitable, and it's a good place to begin. Grandfather having is a good idea. And when it's grandfathered, and where we don't necessarily want additional chickens to come to town, that part of the ordinance protects those people that are against chickens. We have people that have this house of their dreams, and the last thing they want is to have someone move next door to them that might upset this house of their dreams environment. I, we have to listen to folks that have issues like this, and we want to address them, and we have to listen to what they have to say, just like we've listened to you folks. So I think we've got, I think this is a good plan, I think it's a good start, and I think it's worthy of approval.
I have about 24 people reach out to me prior to the meeting tonight. 12 and 12, I counted everything up before I came, and 12 for, 12 against. I count the calls I had before, people that showed up within city limits last week, 20 to 20. So it is a 50/50 thing. I think the problem that I run into, that I struggle with a little bit, is that a lot of people don't want to respect other people's decisions or their opinions, because that's not their way. Well, that's what we're here for, is to listen at full sides. So starting into this, and I think I made that clear before, you know, that I was against them when I ran for this, because a lot of people reached out to me. Were we uneducated? Yes, absolutely we were uneducated. After talking with everybody, I think starting this with compromise of this grandfathering is the way to go. A comment, Garrett, you had mentioned about asking for public comment earlier. We're here 24/7 for that. Yes, you put it on Facebook for that, but this has been out there too. We're always available for that, that's what we're here to do. So that's, you know, I just want, you and I had a pleasant email conversation back and forth, I appreciate you reaching out, and everybody that reached out, I appreciate that. That's what we're here to do, and that's what we need to hear. There's been a lot of comments about dogs. People bring up dogs constantly since the start. Why are we regulating, why would we have to have someone and register our chickens? You gotta register your dog, dog has to have rabies shots, and guess what, you gotta pay for them. We're not asking anybody to pay for them. We're just asking to know who's got them, so we can have that on record, and that's all registered in here. So it's totally different than, you know, than the thing about nuisance and things like that. Sure, there's gonna be fines if it comes to an issue, that, you know, I, the whole point of this saying that this or that doesn't happen when someone else does, but that's not the issue at hand right now. The issue at hand right now is the chickens. So I just wanted to kind of address that a little bit also. I think this is a good compromise. I think it's been received very well from the public, as a whole, the compromise. It takes nothing away from anybody, which definitely something that I think in the end, none of us want to do that, once we kind of getting more educated about it. So that's my stance is right now, so I'm gonna approve the ordinance forward.
So I do receive a lot of emails when we started to solicit or talk about the chickens. So before that, I had nearly attended one against the people that I had talked to in the, in the community. So I, I had been on the side of what I said I ran on, which was against chickens. But as time has gone on, I've received quite a few emails. And overall, I think I'm still, I still have a larger amount of people that are against having chickens in the backyard, so... And I, and I too will advance this forward, so...
Again, you know, this ordinance allows everyone who has chickens currently to keep their chickens. And, you know, people that want to register, which would be a good idea, would be the thing to do, they have 60 days to do so. You know, you know, we are, where the, where the chickens are, just so we have that information available. So we don't want to have a complaint, and then come out and end up finding somebody that we don't, that unfortunately didn't take the time to register, because they will get fined and don't have to lose their chicken. So it's important that people register, it's not gonna cost anything. Just a database, nothing more. So going forward, it's true that, you know, the ordinance does not allow any new chickens going forward. We ran into the same thing, you know, or we didn't, but the city did, many, many years ago when they regulated or passed an ordinance on horses. It also was a land use ordinance, so people had horses in town that could keep their horses, but as they dropped off, and those horses were not on the property for a year, that property could no longer have horses. And today, we still have horses in the city limits of Princeton, because they've been on those properties for the last, well, I think it's back 1970 or somewhere around there when that ordinance was passed. So, you know, you can be without chickens on your property for up to 12 months. If you reintroduce them, you're fine, you can keep them. But they are for the current home, you know, where you currently live. You know, again, it's a compromise, that's what we talked about three weeks ago. That was the overriding, you know, concern, and we're totally open to that. And these meetings have been very useful for us. And the messages, the phone calls that we have received over the last three weeks have also been very useful for us. So we feel that we are on the right course here. And I also agree with passing this ordinance on to the second reading, which would be held in two weeks. Any other comments?
I just, I wanted to say also, one of the other ones that was ducks, one of the calls that I received. And I've known a few people that have ducks, most of them are, live out in the country around, but there's some people around here that have them. They also can be very funny, and it can be emotional support for some people. The person asked for me to say something as far as the ducks, so... I've never had ducks before myself, but I do hear from some people having them, and they can be very enjoyable.
Anything else, any further comments? Okay, the motion has been second, hold on.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Say it again.
No.
No?
No.
McCranskey.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is the requirement for a second reading be suspended for ordinance O-21-024. This is an ordinance amending the city code for the operation of mobile food and beverage vendors. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21-024. Second. I'm sorry. I'm approving the suspension of the requirement for a second reading of O-21-024. Second.
Okay, so the motion has been seconded. This is what we're doing here, is we fastated food truck ordinance a few months ago, and it was a very lengthy ordinance, there was a lot to it. It was worked on multiple times, and this is what happens with ordinances sometimes, that you come back and you make amendments. And one of the things that we had in that ordinance was that there would be no food trucks allowed anywhere in the city of Princeton during the homestead weekend, on the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The intent was to make that no food trucks on the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of homestead on public property, not business property. So we don't want to be telling businesses they can't have a food truck on their property during homesteads. So homestead is just a couple days away, we can't, we don't have time for a second reading, so that's why we're doing the suspension. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-21-024, amending the city code for operation of mobile food and beverage vendors. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
Okay, now I'm doing it. I move that we approve ordinance O-21-024. Second.
Motion has been seconded. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Oh, I've got one more thing. Next on the agenda is Resolution R-21-020. This is a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for the Park Avenue West storm drainage replacement, awarding to Superior Excavating of Menucha, Illinois. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve Resolution R-21-020. Second.
Motion has been seconded. Comments? Teresa.
Just to note, just to note, this is a rebid, we did go up the bid, and they seem, the bid came back a little bit higher than what we anticipated, we thought maybe we'd get a little bit better of a bid on the second time around. Still a little higher than what we had estimated for the engineer's estimation, but Superior did have the low bid at $182,701. We had a total of three bids coming for that project. Again, this is the Park Avenue Storm Subur project, which everybody knows, when we get heavy rain, that tends to flood, it's a battery, it's been that way, but we'll attest to this. It needs to get done. What actually is happening with the ARC money, the American Rescue Funds I just talked about a little bit ago, we are able to use those funds for this project, so it's kind of a saving grace in getting this one taken care of. So now's the time to do it. It's going to be a little bit more expensive than what we anticipated, but given the cost of supplies, it's just what we're facing, so.
And this is, this location is at Greencrop Interests in front of the Park Avenue, and that's where it's really, really good to have, so that is going to be taken care of, very soon, actually, within weeks. So that motion has, or the resolution has been seconded. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Thank you, Pete, and I'll go to City Manager report.
In your packets, you have the July 2021 police pension report, as well as the fire pension report. Also in there, we've gotten caught up a little bit better on our monthly financial reports, so you'll have May and June of 2021 in there. May will probably stand out a little bit more in terms of past reports, because it's the first month of getting into the new budget, so you won't see as much for expenditures. The one thing I do want to point out, because I was very excited to see this, on the June report of 2021 for the sales tax, because this is one of the numbers we like to keep an eye on, the sales tax numbers for June of what we show recorded, which would be about two months behind, was the highest sales tax collected, the reports that we have go back to 2018, so it's the highest month we've seen. So think back a couple months, so we haven't even hit that heavy summertime shopping, so this is great to see, not just for revenue in general for the city, but it goes, it has a huge impact on our street projects, so you're going to continue to see, sorry, a lot of construction with the streets, but I think it's much welcomed, so. Just as a note as well, because we like to keep an eye on the hotel motel, in terms of kind of capturing what our tourism is looking like, our hotel motel for June's report is also up considerably, considering what we were facing last year. So we're kind of getting back close to the 2018 numbers for sales tax collected there, so. It's looking positive, and we haven't even hit homestead weekend, so.
Yeah, and this Princeton sales tax number is all the more impressive in that January, February, March are typically the slowest three months of the year in sales tax revenue. In January, February, we blew the last four or three years, I mean, we weren't even close, I mean, our sales tax revenue was very, you know, very impressive, but this one in March, about $210 an hour, and that's just, I don't know if we've ever had in March a number like that, so. Continue to shop Princeton first, and like Teresa said, it's going to continue to help our street program. Anything else? Okay, so I got, under Mayor Report, we've got a board appointment.
I move that we appoint to the pedestrian and bicycle commissioner Brittany Loudermilk to fill our responsibilities by her term ending June 30th, 2023. Second.
Motion has been seconded. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. I'll go in the old business tonight from the council. Any new business?
Can I make notes? One thing I guess in a new business, I'd like to mention that we have set a date for our electronics recycling day as October 16th, and it'll be held exactly the same way it was last year out at the transfer station, so mark your calendars for the warning of October 16th. There'll be a flyer posted soon that lists out exactly everything you can bring out and what's not allowed, so. Yep, and at the transfer station.
Any other new business? Water devices, DPA fires are not acceptable for electronic recycling or air conditioners because of the chemicals that are contained in those pieces of equipment, so. You know, I looked at last year, we had our fair share of DPA fires coming up, and we cannot take them.
Giant papping machine.
The other thing that I've got on a new business is this is our, our homestead weekend is coming up, homestead festival weekend is coming up. It's the, it's by far the largest single event throughout Princeton and throughout Rio County for the year. There's a kickoff to homestead Thursday night, we have a street concert from six to nine downtown at the Boat Drunks, it's a Jimmy Buffett tribute band, they've been here before, they are outstanding, so they're a really good band. Friday, large list of events occurring, including the unveiling of a star and flag for Keith Knutson, who was a drummer with the Doobie Brothers, Princeton High School graduate, 1966. And Doobie Others, which is a premier Doobie Brothers tribute band, is going to be playing up at Soldiers and Sailors Park on Friday night. Saturday, the parade, well, you know, the list goes on and on and on, there's so much going on the weekend, so it's going to be beautiful weather, it looks like, so everybody get out and have a great homestead weekend. Any additional public comments? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene.
I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening, and reconvene again on Monday, September 20th, 2021, 7:00 PM at City Hall. Second.
Motion has been seconded. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned, and thank you all very much for coming, like, again, like to see this at every meeting.